Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to number nine, shopping court, shopping cart ordinance amendment.
All right, have me for another fun one. So, um. So some good pictures, unfortunately, but cleaning up the town one step at a time here. And so, um, so bear with me as I get into this a little bit. Um, and so before you is in regards to considering as to whether to initiate an ordinance update to the UBS City Municipal Code Title V, Chapter 22, to shopping carts. And so, um, it's important tonight, I want to stress that this is a little bit different than the last ordinance um, process that we just went through, is right now that we do not have the code established and we're not introducing any sort of legal code. And so right now, it's really to consider whether we want to open, go, give staff direction to go in, modify it, and if there are areas to modify, where would you like us to focus? And then we would come back with that, if that's counsel's discretion, purview, then we would come back and bring that to you. Um, so we're one step before the previous item. So, so council's provided input that there's potential interest in modifying the shopping cart ordinance to better meet the city's needs. The purpose with tonight's council action is to have a discussion to provide staff direction on desired changes, if any at all, where staff will then work to make those changes if desired and bring back to council for review and ultimate adoption. Should there be direction, staff will need to work internally with city attorney, various departments, coordinate outreach, feedback from businesses, et cetera, to develop those, that specific code language. And so with this, this presentation provides background information on and potential items for consideration, but the possible changes are really, again, a blank slate ranging from no action, modifying to complete repeal. And so the shopping cart, the shopping cart ordinance that is currently in the code is relatively new. Um, you know, for municipal code with the city starting in the early 1900s, um, this was adopted in December 2017 and recently, and came into effect January 2018. So, um, a little background, there's approximately 35 retail businesses that provide rolling shopping carts. The print's really small there, but they range from, um, less than 10 at the Power Mart to 800, I think, at Walmart as our top, as our top, um, place with carts. So you Winco's, I've heard anywhere from 450 to 600. Um, and you know, Target, for reference is, where's Target at? 300. And so, um, so a wide range of carts with the, the smallest being less than 10 for a category and the larger's up to 800 at Walmart. Here's a breakdown of carts versus stores. So we have three that are less than 10, 12 in the 10 to 40 cart range, 10 in the 40-90 to range, zero in the 90 to 150 range, and then 150 plus nine stores. Currently, for additional information, carts that have wheel locks on them, that we'll talk about a little bit later, um, and that are 150 stores include Bel Air, Winco, and Food Max. So here's our problem, right? Everybody sees this around town. It's frustrating, it takes a lot of resources, um, it hurts businesses, and trying to figure out how to resolve it timely, so it's, it, the visual blight doesn't remain there. And so with the implementation of the shopping cart code as it stands, we saw a drop in the YC 311 reports. So 2017, 697 cases. The, the new code came into effect early 2018, we had it dropped to 303, and now we're in that 130, 120. We're on target right now with COVID-19. I don't know how that plays into it exactly, but we're on target for about 110 this year. With the current ordinance, if you're a business that has nine or fewer, you're exempt from an abandoned shopping cart prevention program. So that's a, it's a long-winded term that basically establishes these rules that if you're in this matrix of what you need to do to manage your carts. So, so with the implement, so, let me flip my page. So with the implementation of the shopping cart ordinance, businesses are required to establish an abandoned shopping cart prevention program depending on the following matrix, with the intent that the ASCPP requires ownage to manage their carts. So the ASCP requires signage stating unauthorized cart removal is illegal, establishing methods to prevent cart removal, retrieval within 24 hours of notification, and provisions for contact phone number information for the stored management for notification when we receive a complaint about an abandoned cart. So we have somebody to call. And so in that matrix, there's a big jump from the, from the 90 to the 91. With that, the, um, there's a requirement for the, for this business to contract with a retrieval company. And so 10 to 90, there's an option for the owner can retrieve it. Once you go above 90, right now in the ordinance, they have to contract with the retrieval company. Additionally, new businesses, 10 or more carts, um, are, businesses with 10 or more carts are required to install a standardized cart containment system with a wheel locking or stopping mechanism that is issued in conjunction with the electronic magnetic barrier along the perimeter. And so what we're saying is that, um, if you're a new business, you have 10 or more carts in the ordinance, you're, you need to put in one of these new magnetic wheel locks. And this is something I pulled off the internet, um, but really what it is, is it, one of the wheels, it has a magnetic, um, mechanism, magnetic motor. And once it goes across, an established barrier that's either established with an underground line or, um, and Lincoln's very familiar with these from the few systems that have been put in, that they, they set up different type of sensors that send out the signal either in the store or at that perimeter to basically engage that wheel lock.
When you go to, um, when you go to Marshalls, you can't push that cart out further. Pushes you back, so it can be dangerous.
Really?
Yeah.
Additionally, so we have the wheel lock requirement for new businesses over 10, and then also, there's a stipulation in there that existing businesses, if they, if they fail to comply. So if, so the wording is, um, is may be required. And so it's, and so with this, we have not pulled this button on any, any existing businesses. We've, we've worked with them and through that, the last three with Winco, Food Max, and I know Bel Air, um, trying to work with them to figure out a solution. And so right now, there's that option that the city could require that, but it's, it's, there's no set threshold put in there, it's a may. Carts, so, um, the number in here, um, I've heard, depending if you refurbish one for $100, I've heard typically 120, 150 bucks, maybe as high as 200 depending on how many you buy and how fancy the cart is. My understanding is they shoot for a 10-year life with 35,000 shopping uses. It's kind of the generic term is what I pulled off online. Cart retrieval contractor, um, local businesses are telling us that the price ranges from 150 to $200 per month for a one to two day a week pickup, and $400 to $500 per month for a three to five day a week pickup. So those larger companies, um, they're, they're leaning towards that three to five day pickup. And then a lot of each contractor, of course, their contract is slightly different. With most of the companies being out of Sacramento, this is where we run into some difficulties and frustration is that we become aware of an abandoned cart. They, we let them know via their contract, and then it goes to their contract retrieval. But then they have a subcontract that basically says, hey, we'll come up when you have two or three cart minimum. And so that's where we run into some of these delays and, and working with those businesses to get them out off the street sooner than later. Wheel locking systems, um, they really vary depending on the, the, the number, the type of system selected, and then the maintenance. So the numbers that, that we, um, the budget numbers, you know, approximately for Winco in 2019, 600 carts, $43,000 to install, and then about 800 to 1,200 dollars per quarter, so every three months to maintain. And so I did, just trying to compare it apples to apples, that was $72 a cart with the 56 cents a month per cart fee. Food Max, two years ago, 200 carts, $30,000, and, and they, they didn't give us any hard numbers, but they said, hey, our, our roughly the same maintenance. So I use the $800 a month cost, and so you could see, eh, eh, there's a substantial difference in the per unit cost just because of the volume. But you're looking, and it's a substantial cost to get the system in place, um, and then there is, there's maintenance with the wheel lock. So based on, um, discussion with staff, and then also, um, input from council, it very, it's times they, um, when I, when I look at the code, it's an, there's an option, eh, there, there's a, there's a level that it is working. And so it, it works where it's, it's decreasing the number of cases that we're seeing out on the street, but it's, um, there's room for improvement with it. And so, um, with, with that, there's been positive outcomes to the reduction in banning cart complaints and staff associated workload. It did put a burden on businesses while many of the individuals that take the carts were unaffected. And so the, the ordinance has been in effect for a little over two years, provides some areas of discussion as to what is working and what is not when reviewing the staff. And so I, I've put together this list of potential, um, discussion items, potential modifications for review, and I'll, I'll work through those one by one. Um, but these are definitely by no means required that we go forward. They're just for discussion and really open to council purview. And then at the end, when I ask for a recommendation as, whether to proceed or not, I'm hoping to basically pick which options that you would like us to tackle, to work through. And so the first one, A, separate the ordinance into two sections that clearly delineate the law and consequences to individuals who remove the carts from store locations. And so right now, there's a state law Business and Professionals Code that says it's, um, eh, it's illegal to remove a cart from the premises. In the city's current shopping ordinance, it's, it's buried down in the bottom of the code, and it's vague as it could be considered an infraction or a misdemeanor. And so with this option, this would basically separate it out where we clearly define a section that says, um, with really the intent to match the Business and Profession Code. With, with, um, with input from the police department, the, the preferred misdemeanor, um, option is recommended where it matches the Business and Professionals Code, and then it also requires a report. So instead of being an infraction that they could possibly get writ, thrown, ripped up and thrown in the garbage, um, with the misdemeanor, there's a report written, there's typically pictures taken, um, there's more evidence as to, um, as to the, the basis for it, and it gives a tool for, um, should a cart need to be seized, um, it can be, is my understanding. Obviously, there's, there's issues with prosecution and, and how that, how that plays out, but the intent with this one would be to match the state Business and Professions Code. Option B, modify the cart threshold for numbers to aid small businesses. And so there, there's, you know, these nine or fewer, 10 to 99, 91 or more. I know when this code first went out, there was a lot of outreach to the businesses trying to establish that number, and then at the council level, um, they also modified it, they tweaked it to make it a little bigger. And so with this, there's an option, do we want to make it a little bigger or do we want to set thresholds? So for the small businesses, instead of being nine or fewer that are exempt, do we make it 20? Do we give the option for those businesses such as New Earth or the grocery outlet that are, that are right on the verge of the 90? Maybe we give them a little more and we'll remove it up to 140, 150, where you're not, it's not a big box store, store like a Winco or a Walmart. Item C, modify the retrieval period from 24 to 48 hours to be, to provide more time for businesses. This might seem counterproductive, um, but it does give an option for those smaller businesses and they're not in violation of the law, because, um, right now, 24 hours, my understanding from Lincoln is really by the time they notice them, logistically come get it, they're pushing that 24-hour limit. So that would be an option. D, require the containment system such as a wheel locking or stopping mechanism to be put in place for retailers of a certain size or for retailers that have a high loss rate with an option for approved phased-in approach. And so, um, eh, eh, this would be an option that, right now, we have it on the new businesses, that you determine a number and you put it on place, that you say that this is the cost of business, we want the wheel locks to go in. But as, as you've seen, there's a substantial cost to that, um, and, and so there's impacts both ways with that. Provide businesses with an option regarding the contracted cart retrieval requirement if an effective containment system is in place. And so, um, this is where I run into a little frustration. If, if I have these businesses that just put in $50,000 worth of improvements, do we need to ding them for the $500 a month for a retrieval contract if they could adequately meet that with their own forces? And so maybe provide that option. So if, if they have a containment system and it's working, they don't additionally have to have a contain, or a contractor on retainer if, if it's not needed. F, remove the new business requirement related to containment system so new businesses would adhere, adhere to the same requirements as existing businesses. So that's really, um, it's, right now, it's written for 10 or more. So if a new business comes in, that, that wheel lock system would be required. And then G is really other potential points that the council have for discussion or that you would like staff to look into further discussion. Fiscal impact, um, it's, it's staff time to administer and force the ordinance as appropriate with alternatives to leave the current ordinance in place as is, completely repeal the ordinance, or provide staff with direction for modifying the proposed ordinance. So my recommendation tonight is discuss the ordinance and council priorities, review potential ordinance modifications A through G, consider then direct staff to initiate the ordinance update with council-determined modification items. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, the city attorney and code enforcement staff is here to help answer any specific questions.
You knew this was coming. First and foremost, I'm not trying to kill the messenger, okay? When this ordinances were introduced to the city, um, I was not on the council and I was not in favor. As a retail business owner who admittedly does not use shopping carts, I am always cognizant of the cost of doing business. And when you start to penalize businesses for the illegal criminal acts of those who are stealing their, their equipment, it just rubs me wrong. And, and, you know, we'll, we'll leave that where it may right now. I guess I just have some questions, and then I'd love to roll down through your A through G. First off is, um, has staff taken a look at what other jurisdictions are doing? And are we consistent with what other jurisdictions are doing? Are we, are we more restrictive? Are we less restrictive? Are we right in the same ballpark? Do we know?
So at this point, I don't, um, I have not reached out to other agencies. I know the original ordinance, it was taken from more of a Bay Area. Um, there was, of the 400 cities, there was, um, there was a certain number in the hundreds of how many have implemented a shopping cart ordinance, but I have not specifically compared those numbers. And with that, that's definitely, if there's interest in that, we would do that work, additional work and outreach.
And you mentioned outreach, that was the next on my list, I'm thinking like, is that I know you mentioned, and I'm not aware because I wasn't here then, um, about outreach at the initial implementation of this. Since that time, have we reached out to, to these, the list of current users of carts to seek any feedback from them on what's working, what's not working, any of their thoughts? Because I think in reality, uh, something that we do that involves them on a financial basis is, is something that we, I believe we should take some time and give them the opportunity at least to voice their opinions on, on this. It's inclusive, I think it's consistent with, with what we're trying to do as far as being business-friendly. And I, I as one would be terribly interested in hearing what it is they have to say about how this affects their bottom line.
So at this point, we have not, just with not knowing exactly what we might change or if we change at all, but that would definitely be included in the plan before we would come back.
I think, um, I think some of your, um, some of your businesses that are using the wheel lock because it is a substantial investment, I'm assuming that part of their decision, if not most of their decision, was probably just loss prevention, not necessarily complying with the city's ordinance, but because of the cost of the carts, um, that they, they decided that it was worth their while to make that investment, which is certainly their business right to do. But I, I, at the other time, I think anytime we're imposing something, uh, and I've talked to a couple grocery people and since this has been one of those issues for me for a couple of years, um, you know, it, it is a big, it is a big investment of which the only return is, is the prevention of the loss of their cart, but that's an illegal act. And I'm certainly not going to look at our police chief in the back and say, man, they need to be the cart police either, I know how that works. Um, we get a cart in our, in our, in our business not belonging to us, and that's a mess. It's full of stuff and they have property in it and everything else. So I understand the burden and I understand the need for us to address this shopping cart concern, but at the same time, I'm not comfortable at all putting the burden on the businesses. And when you talk about a new business that comes in with 10, you know, 10 carts, and we're going to, you know, say, hey, look, you got to put a wheel lock system on, again, it, it appears to me anyway that that is not business-friendly. And as we're looking at some of these other things that, that you have been, um, fortunate enough to tell us, we've got other businesses that are coming, that are potentially taking a look at us. Uh, they're not small shopping cart people. Is this something they're going to look at and go, well, what kind of place is this to come to? They're going to hit me with this, and I never get this in another jurisdiction. I'm making an assumption, but I'm also saying, stating it would, it would be a cost of doing business, and I don't think there's a lot of return on the investment other than the loss. So if you don't mind going through A through G, I really would like to give you my quick opinion on those.
Absolutely, I got A and F down, and so.
Well, no, you don't.
Go ahead, so go A.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I was looking at my paper.
Okay, so A, I definitely think, I agree with your assumption about the two sections. I think that makes a lot of sense in making things consistent. Um, modifying the cart threshold numbers to aid small business, I think that yet to be determined. Again, I'd like to see input from the businesses on this. So we know, um, with, you know, quantitatively, what, what the impact to their business would be. Modifying the retrieval period, I guess the question, and maybe it's to Eric or, or Lincoln is, so they get, someone calls the 311 system and says, hey, there's a shopping cart at, um, you know, 1,003 Stabler Lane, 24 to 48 hours, that shopping cart might not even be there, right?
Lincoln, I don't know if you could add to that?
Multiple Lincolns.
Eric, if you could mute yours, I think that might help.
I apologize for that. The issue is, I guess you, uh, Councilman Blumberg, you're talking about the timeframe to pick up carts?
I'm just, I, I guess the question is more along the lines of, um, you guys become aware that there's an abandoned cart or a cart that's not abandoned and shouldn't have been removed from the property. By the time that makes its way through the system, uh, and you get a location, that thing could have been moved in 24 to 48 hours.
Yes, that absolutely happens. That, uh, in a lot of time, it's, uh, moved by, you know, persons that are possibly homeless or whatnot. Once there are any kind of a notification, uh, I will immediately enter that in to the CarTrak system. It's a retail, and those are the contractor, and they have their folks that come and, and pick it up. Like most businesses here, they're usually on about a one to two day, uh, retrieval of some sort. So yes, that, to answer your question, yes, that cart can be removed. Sometimes they're not, uh, sometimes I will personally remove them myself and return them to that specific business. Or, um, if they don't have any type of retrieval service, then I will, uh, contact that business and let them know either via email, mostly via email, say, hey, you have a cart at 123 Main Street, and, um, they will send someone to retrieve that. And that information is, was originally from the, um, cart retrieval, uh, information that they filled out with the contact and the estimate number of carts, um, and whatnot. If they had a retrieval service, then that's who the contact would be. However, that, that information was provided originally when this ordinance was implemented in 2018.
I, I have received very positive feedback from those that you've reached out to in regards to going and, and them able to go retrieve their own shopping carts. Does that happen frequently, moderately, less frequently?
Uh, I would say that would be less frequently. Mostly the carts were, that I will specifically deal with are our large business carts. And then you have the, um, you have other specific carts that are, filled with trash or things of that nature, however, that are not going to go back in circulation due to the sanitary conditions, the damage to the wheels of some sort. And those are, uh, those carts, and they're sitting in public somewhere as an eyesore, obviously. Those are, uh, removed and, uh, placed in refus.
Okay. So to me, I, I guess, then, for me, item C, I'm not, I think it bears a little bit more research in regards to, you know, whether you make it two hours or 20 hours or 200 hours, is the cart really going to be there? I, I don't know how that, I don't know how you administer that. So I, I just think I would take a look at that. And item D, um, and I tell you what, you know, if, if you, um, I like to think we're a relatively successful business, but if you came to me and said, hey, I need you to go spend 30 or $40,000 on, on shopping cart lock, wheel locks because some guys are stealing your cart, I'd have a problem with that. So again, I'd like to know the consistency and where, where that's being administered. And, you know, if we're, if we're right in there in the norm, then I guess that's a point of consideration. But I would also, again, like to hear from the retailers on that. Um, item E, um, you know, I have heard over the year, couple of years now, that the contracted, we used to have somebody local, I think, uh, that was retrieving carts, and, and then apparently they are not doing that any longer. And so that has been an issue of them having to, to pay higher costs for cart retrieval than initially was, um, made when the, the ordinance was introduced. So I, again, uh, that's, that's an area of interest for me. Remove the new business requirement. And I think that goes hand in hand with what I've said before, but it sure seems, uh, sure seems a bit onerous to say, hey, you got 10 shopping carts, but you're going to have to put a wheel lock system on them. I mean, that's the smaller person that's probably scrambling to, to, uh, you know, to make a living. So those are my comments, I appreciate you listening. But understand, I understand the gravity and the nature of the, the eyesore and the blight that a, a shopping cart has. Again, um, I see them, I've had them dumped at my business. Uh, I know it's a, it's a big deal, especially for disposal and, and, uh, and just getting them back to the businesses. But, uh, this one, like I said, I don't want to be killing the messenger, but I have my area of concerns.
I wanted to throw it all out there, it, it's really wide open, what we could do to improve it. It wasn't perfect when it's put in place, and so it gives us an option to fine-tune it.
Thank you for listening.
Through the mayor. Yeah, uh, Mr. Moody, thanks for bringing this to us. This is one of those that started many months ago, and I know you and I have had a lot of conversations about the shopping carts. And I agree totally with what the vice mayor said so far. We've had conversations about this, and I think where the error of the ways happened was back in 17 and 18, because the council at that time put the entire responsibility on the business owner, period. And that changed our business-friendly approach to people taking a look at us. And it's not a level playing field. We, you know, we just went through the nuisance ordinance, and we were talking about educating and talking about working with people and stuff. And we basically grandfathered in the big box stores that were here like Walmart, but if Joe's Mini-Mark wants to go in and have 12 carts, they suddenly have to spend $15,000 to put wheel locks on. to put wheel locks on. It's definitely not a, a level playing field. And when you looked at the numbers, even though they decreased and you said we were on our track this year for about 110, call it exactly what it is, that's 110 counts of theft that we basically condone. And again, I'm not a proponent of you guys, chief, chasing down shopping carts, but we three years ago, put all that responsibility on the business and they're the ones that are having a cost of business, having their property stolen from them. And it's not just the homeless population. And it was even brought up three years ago, oh, it's the mom taking the groceries home or whatnot in the shopping cart and she's going to return it. Well, we're finding those shopping carts at the bus stops, on the corners of intersections, of neighborhoods. They're not getting returned and that is theft to the businesses. So tonight, it's, it's kind of like you said, this is the start of a much bigger conversation. And we've got to get the, the managers and the owners of the retail establishments, which I've been reaching out to them and come together and have the discussion because we don't know what that looks like. For the big box store retailers will use Walmart, Lowe's, Target. It may be a corporate standpoint to them, it's just a cost of doing business and they really don't care. They actually might care. We don't know until we have that conversation. But to a, a smaller store, you know, I've been seeing Joanne's carts over near my office and I'm over by Lowe's. I've seen those over there. We've seen Home Depot carts. We've seen, you know, you've got a lot of small retailers, your small markets. We can't put the responsibility on them and say that we are open for business and we're business friendly. So again, sentiment's his. We're not going after the messenger. We know this was done several years ago, but we need to start that bigger conversation. And I think it starts with A, and we've had this conversation. I think there has to be a separate section that puts responsibility back on the general public that lines up with the business and professions that simply, you know, boil it down to it's illegal to take a shopping cart off the business premises. You know, they, there's plenty of affordable carts out there and things for people to use. If you're taking a cart, you're stealing from a local business, period. Whether your intent is, you know, stealing or not, you're stealing. And so I think that's where it starts and then we work with all of our businesses here. And because if I had a business and I needed 12 carts, I wouldn't come here if I had to drop another $15,000 into wheel locks when Walmart doesn't have to. So I'd be interested to see what the public has to say. And as we move this forward, I really want to invite all of those retailers to some sort of workshop or meeting or something to get their input because that's going to be extremely valuable. And like the vice mayor said, how do we stack up against other municipalities? And going back to what we've talked about many times through all this COVID stuff and everything else, we're not San Francisco Bay Area. We're not Los Angeles. Let's look at real communities that stack up against Yuba Sutter, Yuba City, see how they're handling it because that's our real litmus test. We're not, you know, a huge metropolitan area, so let's kind of look at those.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
Thanks, Ben. I appreciate your PowerPoints. I'm really enjoying the detail and the content. You do really well. And I'm appreciative of the team that you, on the teams, team, Eric and Lincoln joining us tonight. I think that the vice mayor, you did a fabulous job of going down the PowerPoint for, for this particular ordinance, that one of the things that we do as, I don't know if the public knows, but every Monday before a council meeting, normally we meet with the city manager and we have about a one hour meeting, each of us, or sometimes a pair will meet with the city manager and we kind of go through what the agenda may look like, you know, what are the issues and what we're going to be talking about. And each of us have an opportunity to kind of ask our questions, you know, during that time in that meeting. And the reason I'm sharing that is because there were, I had two very specific questions and one was, you know, how did we get here? Meaning, why are we reviewing this shopping cart ordinance? Is there a, a huge need or are there shopping? I mean, I, I walk, I ride my bike, so I, I see them in the community. Second is, have any, have we discussed this topic with local businesses that, that have shopping carts? Because it's important to know what they think, right? If we're going to make any modifications or what's this ordinance look like? And I think that one other area that it sounds, a mutual agreement with Councilman Shaw as well, is, you know, what are other jurisdictions doing? We want to have some sort of consistency in our ordinances. And I think I find when we do that kind of consistency, in particular with shopping carts, as we work with, you know, Johnny Burke talked about the homeless issue. And I've heard many times the topic about, you know, these carts being utilized by homeless community members and which they are. And, and then there are community members that I see them, live in apartment complexes or homes. I've seen them pushing their items as well. So I, I think I would be in agreement and support to know how this would do, how would this be a, a financial impact on our, our businesses that are currently utilizing these shopping carts? What has been their experience in utilizing or the impact of this particular ordinance that we, that was passed in 2018? And for our team to know what other jurisdictions are doing. And based on that, I would like to then hear a summary from what you compile and then we can have a better conversation when we come back to a city council meeting and say, okay, this is where we're at now. And maybe some of the business owners or the managers of those, you know, like Winko or, or Walmart would, could come to one of the council meetings and they could report directly to us and what their concerns are or their ideas in reference to this particular ordinance. I, again, if you haven't heard in the last ordinance and this particular ordinance, I'm interested in hearing from the community. I'm interested in hearing from who those are going to be impacted. In particular, businesses, retail businesses do not need to have additional financial hardship on, at this moment, at all. We need to be very considerate of that. And as we're bringing in these new businesses, maybe there is a question to ask them. What's your experience with the shopping cart ordinances and other areas that you have established business in? Maybe we could be better than the other places and, and, and take care of this. But to have an ordinance without who it's going to affect, I'm not interested in, in adding more financial hardship to business owners or community members. So I support with Vice Mayor Blumgarden mentioned and impartial, some of the items that Councilman Shaw as well stated. And Ben, I appreciate you always bringing it all to us and then allowing us to have the process. So thank you for that.
Through the mayor. Ben, on the shopping carts from 17 to, to date, is that our 311 apps that was at 620 17 and 100 in 2020, is that through our 311 apps? That's the ones that all our city employees picked up, Public Works crew?
Okay. So prior to the ordinance, these were cases that came in to the system. And then as far as how they got picked up, at that point in time, typically it was through Public Works. They would either have a couple guys run around each day or they would schedule time every week or biweekly to go out and do a roundup. And so at that point, the duration that they were in the community was longer. So there, there might be some, some double counting with this is because if you had the Public Works crew only being able to allocate time every week or every two weeks, then you might have received multiple complaints about the same cart. And so, and just to make, when you look at those numbers, there might be some of that going on.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. The flip side of that too is we also pick up carts that are never entered into the system.
Right. Thank you. So no, I just wanted to educate staff because we were here at that time in 2017 and 18 when we did this ordinance. Arnaldo was involved. It was a major, it was very time consuming to our staff. It was taking away the duties that they couldn't take care of to make our city run smoothly. So we had two Public Works employees and a flatbed truck picking up more than, it was about once a week, sometimes a couple of days a week, going all over town. So these six, we're just going to say, we're just going to say 600 in 2017 and now it's down to 120 20, so that's because our employees are only picking up 100 carts a year instead of 600 carts a year. We made it responsible for the businesses. Also, when we did this ordinance, Arnaldo talked or sent emails to all these businesses to get their comments and what they thought about this. And like I said, he did this through the Bay Area program. The businesses at the time, the comments, they weren't that negative. They said that they were okay with this. Our, like I said, our staff picked up carts. We had 200 shopping carts down under our wastewater treatment plant facility, called, had them all sorted out. We sorted them out for them and called the businesses, please come pick your carts up. And the major businesses said, just throw them away, we don't need them. It's cheaper for us to buy new ones than to send our staff or trucks over to pick up the carts that we've already collected. So this was a long process that our past economic developer, Arnaldo, that did and was a major item and it was very time consuming for our city employees to do all this. So the businesses were notified. We did get their comments. We may, that was just our game plan at that time. We, like Ben said, we could change the shopping carts, not, you know, 10 or less, it could be 20 or less or, you know, like between 90 and 150, there's nothing there. We can, we can change the numbers around, but we did get responses from the business. We had very minimal complaints. They were all for it. And another suggestion is, it's only suggestions, instead of them paying 40, $50,000 a year, these big businesses, major businesses, they have trucks, pickups on the, the major businesses. They could just have one of their employees drive around and call them up and pick these up. There, it's an employee, it's already a laborer for that business and, and it could save them $50,000, $60,000 a year for the wheel locks, this, that, and the rest, just by purchasing a truck or they already have a truck in their inventory to pick these shopping carts up. We don't have to wait 48 hours or twice a week for a company to come out of Sacramento to pick it up. And it's just suggestion on that, but I just wanted council to know that we did work on this. It was a lot of hours, man hours that we put into this. The businesses were good with it and we're back at this right now. The small businesses were somewhat okay with it. I didn't hear too many complaints about that at that time. They were okay with it. So it was mainly us calling them up. The small businesses were great. They'd run out, we'd call them up, they'd run out at the end of the day or during the day and pick it up. We had no issues with them. It was the big businesses, the big box chains. They said, just keep them, throw them away, we don't want them. So I just wanted to let council know about that and like I said, we can make some changes. It was a starting plan, 2017, where at 2020, we can make some changes and make it bigger and better today than what it was three years ago. And that's just my comments. Thank you.
All right, Ben, you're looking for tonight, just to initiate an ordinance or you need specific modifications?
You know, from, from the input from council, in summary, what I'm taking is there's a definitely strong interest in initiating a modification. And so, so with that, I make the recommendation to initiate the ordinance. It looks like from working through Vice Mayor Blumgarden's comments and then also other input, really there was interest in receiving feedback from all of it, plus with the workshop on all of the items. And so if we make the recommendation as stated, to initiate the ordinances, including items A through F, then we'll come back, we'll, and so just to be clear on this, it's not going to come back to you in two weeks, as you know. There's going to be outreach to the businesses. We, we're going to look at what other cities do. We're going to maybe have a workshop set up to figure out what level that we need to get the participation and then come back with the summary. Work internally with the city attorney to make sure we could start putting that, the, the legal document together and then bring that back towards you. And so I, I would anticipate that realistically, the way things work and, and things going on, that you won't see me back reporting on it until maybe November.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
If the council can provide any initial guidance tonight, that would be helpful for staff as well. It helps narrow down where we want to go on it.
We mentioned A through F, A through G, what was it?
So one point of clarification that I'd like to make is that, you know, Ben's talking about starting, initiating, updating the ordinance. What I would actually recommend is we do the follow-up items related to contacting the businesses, getting the financial information, checking what other jurisdictions are doing before we start that ordinance update process. Bring that information back to council to see if it is council's desire to actually modify the existing ordinance. And then at that point in time, we can address those areas A through G to see, because there might be other things that come up as well. So for next steps, to go through those items that council specified tonight, not have staff proceed with starting to address the ordinance and then have that follow-up meeting before we could take that next step.
I think that's a great idea, Diana. It's, it's very important to get feedback from the businesses, for sure. We might not even need to take it as far as, as this is, if they can come up with an association, if you will, rather than one business doing their own, each doing their own scenario for one cart at a time, if you had somebody going around getting any cart at all. It is hard to do enforcement unless you catch somebody in possession of it and then if they, they're going to deny that they're the one that took it, then you have to have, okay, possession of stolen property, but where's the report? And it creates a lot of time for these folks that it's just, it's quite frankly, not worth it. They have more things to do. But that's just an idea throwing out there, but the main thing, it starts with you, what you just said, I think, is getting that feedback and doing the groundwork first.
One other thing to note is that, you know, over the last few years, we've seen an increase in terms of the materials that are left in the cart.
Yeah.
And then also, just in terms of what employees are required to do to be able to, to basically get in full hazmat suit for the most part.
Yeah.
To be able to address that. And so that's another consideration that I think has changed tremendously over the last couple of years. And that's another item to bring up with these businesses in terms of, you know, having to address those items.
Good point. Chief, do you have something?
I can take one quick point on this, is that it does, when you're talking about the law enforcement aspect of this and making it a misdemeanor, it does require intent.
Right.
And the second portion is, it's not just finding somebody in possession of it and that's not stolen property. It's got to have clear defining markings on it. So there's a lot of requirements in that and we'll work with the district attorney as well to make sure that they're understanding and the impact, but absolutely, we'll, we'll take a look and do this as well.
I notice that's one reason why you, you have the, I remember Food for Less, they were on to that and they would scratch the Food for Less logo off the side for that exact reason. So there's ways around it. Making it, making it against the law doesn't mean we're going to have people held accountable.
Absolutely. And there is, there's a, a lot of issues, but we'll work through, we'll work through all of them.
Thank you very much.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
And chief, thank you for your comments and we've talked about this a little bit before, but going back three years, there was kind of a mixed message because it came out of these chambers, it was okay to take a shopping cart home and by prior council members. And we're looking for, again, that voluntary compliance of, look, whether you realize it or not, you're taking away from a business owner here in town. And so we're seeking the voluntary compliance as much as we can. So, thank you.
So with that, I don't believe we need an action.
No, we don't.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ben. Clearly a lot of work put into that. We'll see you.
The mayor, I, I do hate to interrupt you, but this item does need to go out to public comment before you move to the next item.
Forgive me, I thought I already did that. Do we have any public comment on this item? Go ahead. Anything on the computer?
Yes, there is one on the computer. Let me read that while you're waiting for Mr. Burns.
Yes, please.
All right.
The center room is dark, so we're good there.
This is from Tony Curran. He wants to know who the biggest offenders are and could an ordinance change target these offenders? No pen intended, he said. It seems that the persons who take these carts should bear some of the responsibility.
Okay. Thanks, Tony. Sir.
Okay. Name is Thomas Burns. I would like clarification on what you call an abandoned cart, if it's full of somebody's junk or if it's totally empty.
It's really on the public. The public selects the body. It's usually just a cart without owner.
Okay. So to me, I think that, that the whole thing should be abandoned, what you already have right now. And I agree with Mark and Dave that punishing the, the business owner for the thievery of their merchandise is, I mean, that's un-American. And I just don't see why we couldn't have some police enforcement on it, you know? Why not? Give them a ticket. Take them to court. I mean, how long are we going to coddle the homeless around here? Since I've been in my business location, probably $2,000 worth of stuff has been stolen from me. So I'm sick of them. That's where I'm at. I'm sick of the homeless stealing stuff. And I think something needs to be done about it. And, and quit coddling the homeless. That's, that's the situation there. The, it's just, I can't even fathom that, that it's been put on the back of the business owner. And also, who pays for that? The general public, okay? So it's another welfare program. I would like to hear why, why the police can't enforce the stealing. I mean, everybody and their brother knows if it, if it's not yours, you, you know, you stole it. So that's the way I feel about it.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else? Nope. Yeah, just confirming, nothing showed up on the computer?
Nothing additional.
All right.
Thank you.
So I believe.
Mr. Mayor Laverne Daniel? Hi. I'm back again. On A, when you work that out, I think it's truly important to consider if it is something that is by the homeless, what do you do with the contents? What are the regulations? What you can do with it? Can you seize it, toss it? Is it personal property? There's a whole big piece in there and who's responsible for whatever you do with that? Besides whether it's hazardous or not, you know, people's clothes, things like that. I've seen people going around pushing a cart and pulling a cart. And so this really is a big issue and they are thieving. Does it have to be abandoned before we approach it? All of those are considerations that I think should go into the separate part of A. Thank you.
And thank you. All right. Going once, twice?